Resnahan, here. Johnston.
Here.
Bone?
Resn-
Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Painter?
Here.
Peterson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carr?
Yes. Item two on the agenda, public comments. You have any public comments? You're good. Item number three is Doug Geetson, Director for Building and Grounds. Come on up, Doug.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. So we're looking to replace Harlan Clevenger. He will be retiring in a month. So we're hoping to get the process started early. We will not have an overlap in people. But I would like the two weeks to put out the applications and start doing interviews and then giving that person two weeks, weeks to leave their other project. So that puts us four weeks away, which is this Friday. We start that. It will be four weeks. So that is my request, replace him and start the process.
What in the past, how have we done this? Don't we allow a lot of posts and then they come back and we approve the hire or what? How do we do this normally?
Normally, we just let them, once the person's done, post and do the hiring process. But Doug's asking for us to do it early because he doesn't want to be caught with just two guys shoveling snow for two or three weeks in January. So he just wants to start the process early. That's what we normally do.
That's how I see it. There's nothing unique about this from how we pass practice outside of starting it early.
Right. But this is, I mean, we're not going to see this again. He's going to hire and that's it, right?
Right.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to allow the maintenance director to start taking applications for a replacement maintenance employee to start January ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Support. Okay, it's been moved and ported to allow maintenance director to start taking applications for replacement maintenance employees starting January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Any discussion?
Start taking applications on the ninth of December and make the hire on January.
Yeah, I was just reading that myself, thinking it's, I thought it was clear, but it could be clearer. Yes. Start taking applica- start application December ninth and hire on January ninth.
I'll amend my motion to say that.
Do I got to say it over? No.
As long as whoever's jotted down as a support, still support, support, so.
They still support.
Any more discussion? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Trevor Wright, Veterans Affairs.
Good afternoon. I am here today to seek approval of some small changes we made to our bylaws and allow for signatures and placed on filed where required. The small changes we made were due to the secretarial position and that our original bylaws stated that the secretary was to hold records in which we would, we've been holding the records in our office. Anyway, so we wanted our bylaws to reflect that.
On page two, there you go. Page two, there's highlighting.
Be page five of your pack. So item after the Montcom County Veterans Affairs staff shall retain the board's bylaws, policy statements. Is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay. And then the secretary, secretary shall provide oversight and sign necessary documentation. Is that? I guess what's oversight?
It's just oversight of the minutes and and the records, but the office itself would retain those records.
I got you. So this is pretty, uh, pretty cut and dry then?
And the last, I believe, the last policy or the last changes we made was right when Ryan and I were transitioning over. I don't believe those got sent up for a signature, so I wanted to make sure that we had the appropriate language there for Pat's signature on this one.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Peterson?
I would move to approve the changes to the MCVA Advisory Board bylaws and allow for signatures to be placed on file where appropriate.
We have a motion of support to approve changes to the MCVA Advisory Board bylaws and allow for signatures to be placed on file where appropriate. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in support of the motion, say aye.
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 And opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you for your time.
I received a call from Bonnie Sims on Friday.
I like when you guys say that.
She's extremely ecstatic about you guys, you guys helped her out immensely with her husband's passing. She had nothing but kind words to say about everyone in your office.
All saying what I like.
Nice job, guys.
Thank you.
Right. Next up is Krista Millard.
Okay, we were approved for fifteen thousand dollars for a purchase of a folder inser- sealer machine. This is coming from the CPL fund. I do want to be right up front that we did not take bids on this because we had a difficult time finding three different companies that are selling this type of equipment. The Treasurers Office does have an old machine downstairs, so we went with their vendor, which was Automated Business Equipment. And we checked with Michigan Office Solutions, Automatt Pleasant and Grand Rapids and SOS in Grand Rapids. And they did not sell them. So we have a quote for fifteen thousand dollars on a brand new one that comes with a one-year warranty for parts and labor. They also have a refurbished machine for ten thousand eight hundred. They'd give us a hundred and eighty-day warranty on that one that has currently two hundred and two thousand cycles on it. So since we were approved for the fifteen thousand, I'm requesting that we purchase the brand new one. But it's completely up to you whether you'd like to buy the new or the refurbished. We'd be happy with either.
Kind of warranties on the new one compared to the used one?
Excuse me?
What kind of warranties on the new?
A one-year warranty for parts and labor on the new, only a hundred and eighty days on the used. And it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour labor, eighty-five dollars per service call and then whatever parts if we're out of warranty.
How much are you going to use it in the first year?
It's really hard to tell because we can use it for multiple things. For the CPLs, probably several thousand, for jury questionnaires, at least ten thousand. So we're probably looking at about twenty-five thousand cycles the first year.
So would you say that the two thousand, two, two hundred and two thousand cycles is like mileage on a car?
That's kind of how I felt.
Very good.
How much maintenance is going to have to be? How much maintenance is going to have to be done on this thing?
Well, what we have learned from using the county treasures is that theirs has broke down a lot. It's, it's an old machine.
Okay.
So as far as like maintenance that we're going to have to have on it, that's why I was scared of using a refurbished. I wanted to go brand new.
And this has already been approved out of your CPL fund?
Correct.
So this is just a
An exception to the policy.
Yeah, because you didn't
Because we didn't get things.
Do the RFP or whatever.
And we're giving us the choice of new versus the used.
I've already made like three motions today, so I'm not doing that.
Mr. Chairman? I just have one question for Ms. Millard, just to get on the record. Are you in any way benefiting from the purchase from this vendor?
I am not. Yeah, I don't have to pull them.
Well, it's, it's a no bid, since it's no bid.
I just want it to be
I am not financially benefiting, no.
I just want to be transparent.
Benefiting and less paper cuts.
Asking that for your benefit.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the county clerk to purchase a new FP one-two-seven-two-five-E folder inser- sealer machine from Automated Business Equipment in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars with costs to come from the CPL fund.
It's been moved and supported to allow the county clerk to purchase a new FP one-two-seven-two-five-E folder inser- sealer machine from Automated Business Equipment in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars with costs to come from the CPL fund. Any discussion?
I just have one, one further thing to add. It seems to me like that's a twenty percent discount off a new vehicle with over two hundred thousand miles, so that's a real deal. The new one, right?
Yeah.
There you go.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number six would be Amy Thomas, Dispatch Director.
Hello.
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 For those of you that aren't familiar, um, Montcom County Central Dispatch Authority is funded solely by surcharge funds. So I'm in front of you today because our current surcharge will expire on June thirty-first of twenty, or June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. And so I'm requesting it be on the ballot in twenty twenty-three, which allows them time to let the cell carriers know that we're either continuing with the current charge or we're going to increase it. And I am requesting to add and increase on the ballot to three dollars, from two eighty-five to three dollars per device, which will give us about roughly seventy-five thousand dollars in additional revenue and do that for another five-year term.
When will this be voted on?
In the twenty twenty-three calendar year. So the state nine-one-one office in May is when they will notify the carriers that it would take effect the next summer.
Chris, do we have a countywide?
We don't have a countywide scheduled. May second, we'll have two precincts as of right now going. It would be Bava Deere and Cato for recalls. We have nothing scheduled for August. And we only have cities and then whatever schools ask for a special in November.
So how would we get this voted on?
It would be a special countywide.
And the authority would have to pay the cost of it. We know that, right?
Yes.
Do we know what the cost is?
No. This is the first I've heard of it, when I saw this agenda.
Oh, I emailed you last week. Yeah, I emailed you last week about it.
Why does sixty-some thousand stick in my mind?
I'm going to guess it's going to be around the fifty thousand dollar mark. Our ballot costs are lower, but we still have to hire all the workers.
Are you?
What's that?
Is that about what we discussed or was it less than that?
I don't think we discussed an amount. We knew that it was going to cost and we had discussed the EMS mileage when that was going to be on. And that was one thing that we discussed at the authority level. And we weren't sure when that was up, if that was going to be on a ballot as well.
Is this something that has to be done next year? Is this, it has to be voted on next year?
It does have to be voted on next year so that in May, when they, the state does the reporting, they can notify all the cell carriers of the change for twenty twenty-four.
I, I don't mean this way it sounds, and I hope it's not too offensive, but why didn't we do it this last year?
That's my oversight. I did not realize there were not any elections during twenty twenty-three.
And you're, you're fully prepared to say, okay, this was my, my screw-up. We'll, we'll, uh, well, the taxpayers will, will essentially pay for a special election for it.
It, it's our surcharge funding. We don't have any infunding outside of this.
Is there any chance you could wait until February of twenty-four for the presidential primaries?
That's kind of the twenty-seventh, isn't it?
Too close.
Well, it's close because if for some reason it doesn't get approved, we can't go back again. So if it didn't happen in twenty twenty-three, then we could do twenty twenty-four. But if it didn't, then we're short.
So you're willing to take a chance that it even doesn't get approved in twenty twenty-three due to the fact it's a single item and not too many people will be able to vote for it?
We, we have to put it on the ballot in twenty twenty-three.
What happens if you don't?
We are one hundred percent surcharge funded, so our surcharge currently will expire in twenty twenty-four.
So we don't have no funding.
You get nothing.
I mean, you got to see how this looks. This is not a great deal.
We've discussed it at the dispatch authority. But there's, I guess there's no guarantee that putting it on in twenty-three that it passes. I mean, the idea or the thought was the backup plan that you could still potentially run it on that presidential primary in twenty-four for a second attempt, right? But just assume that for whatever reason it doesn't pass in twenty-three. I don't know. I guess I don't know at, at the cost of that special election, if that outweighs the, just moving it to the beginning of twenty-four and, and having it on when there's already one. Would we, we'd still pay a cost of that? Would we pay a share of that election in the presidential primary?
Yeah. Well, no, no.
That one's paid for.
The state, state pays for all of that.
I don't know if we ever discussed that option. I think we were talking about maybe splitting an option, splitting a cost with EMS or something, but.
And then you didn't know veterans or somebody else had something as well, and that's where I'm coming from.
If we're going to run this in her request in twenty twenty-three, when would we, when would be the deadline or we'd need to?
Well, it depends on which date you want to, if you want to put it on May, the deadline would be in February. If it was August, it would be May. And if it was November, it would be August. So.
May or August would be when we'd have to get it to you by?
February for May.
Okay.
May for August and August for November.
Run it back to the authority board for?
Again?
I mean, what's your thought? Or do you want to still just give us a recommendation to consider here today?
Can we do the recommendation to consider it today? And then when it goes to January meeting, if they change their mind, bring it back here, but at least we have a decision there. Honestly, either way, I'm in front of you. Yes, it's not the place I want to be. We've recovered some surcharge funds from past that we've had too that would fund this. So do I want to use it for this? No, I don't. But here's where we are. So surcharge recovery and going back after companies that weren't paying for the last ten years is the funds that we'd be using for this that we had not previously recovered. I'm aware of it.
Well, I, 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 I know that I, I know that I came across a little brash, but I, I, I understand that mistakes happen and I get it. And, and, and it is. It's just one of those things and I, and I get that. It's just, it's kind of a hard pill to swallow for you guys having to shell out fifty grand just for people to, I mean.
Thank you. It was up, last time it was up, I lucked out. It happened to be during a county election, so it wasn't something I had to think about at the time. This one, I was letting the authority board know ahead of time, hey, we've got to do this, not realizing that there wasn't one the next year. So that's on me. I didn't know. Last time it was not even an issue.
Well, this, and, and to further what I was going to say, it's not like you're in front of us all the time saying, hey, I, I biffed up, you know, it's, this is very rare for you to come up here. No offense in general, you're, you're not, you don't come up here very often, so.
And I've been very faithfully responsible. I do want to add that
Absolutely.
Since I've been the director, I've done a lot of things to bring in money. We've got twenty-four thousand dollars in revenue that I started bringing in based on using our equipment, charging back for things and using our funds appropriately.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm not discrediting that at all. I'm not, I'm not saying that, that this is, you know, commonplace for you and you're doing this all the time. I'm just trying to work my mind through it is all.
And it's seventy-five thousand per year
Yes.
of that five-year.
Yes. But even regardless, even if we stay, we have to vote on it regardless to stay where we are. So that if we, if you said you weren't going to allow an increase and it was two eighty-five, we still have to vote on that.
And if we spend fifty thousand dollars to get to seventy-five thousand, we really make twenty-five out of that first year, right?
Dispatch. It's not something the county that I'm asking you guys to spend. It's something that we would have to
No, but I mean, you, you spend it. It's a twenty-five thousand dollar.
Yes.
Fifty thousand, you get three hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah.
So seventy-five thousand is the what you would get if you charged three dollars or is that the incremental increase?
That would be the increase between what we're currently charging and what the three dollars would bring in would be an additional approximately seventy-five thousand. Right now, we're in the middle of the pandemic, so people got extra funds, so they put in extra phones. We've saw an increase for that. We can't guarantee we would always see that.
So you could see more, you could see less.
Yes, depending on how many devices in the county.
So the fifteen cents gets you seventy-five thousand.
Yes. And that is the most we can ask according to the state. That is the max for surcharge for any seller across the state. And the counties around us are currently at three dollars. Ionia, Grash, McCosta, Isabella are all at three dollars as well.
And we haven't changed this in how long was it?
At least a decade when I looked back. Originally, when we went to two eighty-five, we were not loving the whole two eighty-five, so it's up to that amount. We did two fifty-seven, I believe, for a while. But it's been at two eighty-five for the max for approximately ten years.
I'll start interrupting you now, Phil.
Well, I'm generally ignorant of how much money you currently have, how much you currently spend. I don't have the, I don't have the macro view of things. How important is seventy-five thousand dollars?
It's important. Brenda and Eric and I are the three county reps on the authority board and it operates with the cost of technology changes and just the sheer cost of what those things are. Amy's very frugal as she, she's probably too humble to really admit the truth on that, but she's done a great job of, of banging on those cell phone device company trying to get them to pay their money. They were, there were a lot of them that just were letting it go by the wayside. So she's reminded them and made sure that they all pay. And then as far as an operating budget or spending money on things, she, she does a really good job of being conservative on that. So seventy-five thousand dollars is is needed. I mean, she went this many years trying to hold it at the two eighty-five, but it just isn't realistic anymore with the cost of what it takes to run that place and.
And I will do everything I can to make up the cost of the election.
No doubt you would do that.
We've been creative now. One thing is, you know, we put in our own network to save. I will, again, do what I need to do.
All right, let me finish asking what's on my mind.
If I'm not interrupting you, somebody is.
Somebody is. So on my cell phone bill, is there a charge for two eighty-five? That goes to whoever, Verizon, AT&amp;T, Spectrum, whatever. And they're not paying you that money somewhere?
They are. We've had some that we're not, but I've actually had to contact and get some records and they remitted payment. We just got a nineteen thousand dollar check here within the last couple of months from payments that we were owed for, I want to say it was the past four years that someone had not been paying us. We had another company that was thirty-five thousand dollars that they had not paid us over a period of time.
Which company?
I'm not going to say in a public meeting.
Why not?
Most, most of the big carriers pay on time. It was some of the kind of obscure ones that are
Taking money and keeping it illegally. Hillbillies cellular.
Just waiting for a bill. How much money are we owed? Or not owed?
I have, I, I keep a spreadsheet. So this is what I do. I have a spreadsheet. Our monthly, I have every cell carrier we have, but they're on my radar. I put in what they pay. And then if something changes, I flag it and say, okay, they were paying us a thousand dollars a month all along. Now they haven't paid. I contact them and say, hey, we haven't gotten your quarterly, you owe us. Or if it changes in price, so maybe it goes down to two hundred, I contact them and say, hey, there's been a decrease. I'd like some records to see why it has decreased. And my records show that you're not paying the same as you should, and that's actually netted us some money that were owed us that we would not have gotten before.
So how much are we owed approximately?
Right now?
Yeah.
I'm on, there's not one that I'm aware of right at this time. I have a couple that I'm watching, just making sure, but and that hadn't in the past, but there's no one that I know of right now that we are owed.
Okay, so we're current, more or less?
Yes, to my knowledge, we are.
This bothers me, knowing my cell phone carrier may be taking my money, not sending it where it's supposed to go.
I think you should just not pay them.
Stop paying that three bucks or whatever.
Well, it's, it's like collecting social security tax from your payroll and not remitting it to the tax authority.
Just a job of you. So what, what amount of you and Pat's exchange? You want this approved but not approved, or you're going to take it back to the authority board? I, I don't.
I would like an approval, whether it be today or, because I do know I had to bring it here before it went to the full board.
We're going to send it to the full board.
And then my next authority board meeting is January. I'll take them back what you guys had decided and let them know where it is and if I can get an approximate cost.
Yeah, I mean, this is the first I've heard of it. I was not sending you.
Can we recommend a, well, can we table this until the January?
I think we could, but I think Amy has made it clear that I guess she would prefer this to happen. And so I think the cleanest thing to do here is to potentially grant this motion. And then if she takes it back to the authority board and they decide to alter it or whatever, we can come back and and change the plan. But if, if we don't, she's got this in place to proceed into twenty twenty-three. And it's really her, you know, it's really her call. She runs dispatch. She's, she's requesting for us to put it on the ballot. Whether, whether or not the timing's right or not, it's really neither here nor there at this point. And in defense of that, I mean, she's, it's not like she just completely booted this. She's a year ahead of time asking for this. And, and the last time she was a year ahead of time asking for this proactively, there was an election that year. And she didn't realize that, that's something that might not be available every year. So, I mean, you really got to, can't really fault her for missing the, missing this deadline, so to speak. She's, she's being proactive, trying to figure this out a year ahead of time so that it doesn't go unfunded. And she just got caught between election cycles where there isn't one. So it'd take someone with like the clerk's experience to understand that you need a countywide election in order for this to be free. And then that might not, if it was, if it was anything other than the presidential deal, there might be an associated, it might be a split with.
MCC could throw something on and then it would only cost you half of that. Or school district or.
Is there any way to kind of understand what might be in the pipelines? We can coordinate?
I heard a little bit of noise about some schools going next November. And that's only because they've asked questions on when filing deadlines are. So as of right now, to split costs, I would say probably next November would be best, but.
And I can contact the schools as well, just to see.
Anything could happen.
And I will never be in front of you again. I learn lessons.
And if it doesn't pass, when can it go on again? Three months after that?
It could go on to the next
Next election.
Yeah, we have elections in May, August and November. Those are available dates.
Because I'm a little bit worried about the ballot language.
Yeah.
What it's going to say.
Well, and, and what, so hypothetical, it fails next year. We have to run it out again in twenty twenty-four.
You have a presidential primary in February.
But is that going to be too late? I, I guess what, what's, what's worst case scenario? It doesn't pass next year. Can, you know, can you operate until it passes?
We have money to operate, yes. We have money to operate in this, our current surcharge doesn't expire until July of end of June of twenty twenty-four. So we approve it ahead of time to give the cell carriers notice that they need to change what they're remitting us. So yes, we have money. I've created a fund balance that we have money. We need the surcharge. We need the approval, raise it what it is. We need it. We luckily, in the last several elections, we've done very well as far as the public approving our surcharges, about a seventy percent approval rate. I plan to diligently work on that, make sure the public's educated on what it is, why we're asking for it, what it is around us.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Peterson?
I would move to recommend the full board to place the nine-one-one surcharge increase. nine-one-one surcharge increase from two eighty-five to three dollars on the ballot during the calendar year twenty twenty-three in order to have it take effect by July first, twenty twenty-four, when the current voter approved surcharge expires.
It's been moved and supported, sent to the full board. Uh, the nine-one-one surcharge increase from two eighty-five to three dollars even on the ballot during calendar year two thousand twenty-three in order to have it take effect by July first, two thousand twenty-four, when the current voter approved surcharge expires. Discussion?
If I can.
Yes, ma'am.
So you will have to have the full board approve the ballot wording for the specific election date. So when you guys figure that all out, make sure that it goes to the board, and then I have it in time to put it on the ballot.
The next board meeting, that would be the date. We would have the date in the December meeting. Is that when that would happen, so that I can get it to the January authority board? So was that when they would vote on the, the date? Or not?
The date of when to put it on the ballot?
So that I know what my deadline is to get everything done, approved.
This is why I said we should throw it into the July table till July. But it sounded like we were hot and bothered to do it right now.
Why don't you want to wait till July?
Or Ju- January. It started with J.
Thought maybe you were having some special thoughts.
Is January when you know what the other elections are, is it?
No, I already know.
Well, January was to, to let you take it back to your board and have you guys decide when you wanted to put it on, because ultimately you guys are footing the bill. So.
So right now, he's just saying, you can have it in twenty-three, but then you guys need to come back with official wording and ask for a specific date.
Right.
I just want to be very clear about that.
Okay.
And the exact language.
Yes.
Yeah. Specific wording.
Yes.
This kicks it to our full board in two weeks. Theoretically, we'll pass it. If it passes here, we'll pass it. That'll, that'll set you off and running.
I'll contact the school as well, see what's going on there.
Authority board level, we need to decide then what the, come up with the official language and get it to the clerk to get back to our board to approve before the deadline of whatever date you choose.
And I apologize. I didn't think that we had any say in the date. I thought that was all set by the board of commissioners, that there was no wiggle room as far as when we put it on.
I think sometimes we have done that. We've, we've authorized when, when an item can be on the ballot, because we don't want competing things at times. But on this, in this case, when it's open, it's gonna be any one of the, I think that'll be up to you to decide which one you like your chances better out, timing wise.
And hopefully it'll be something else being voted on. I think that was the purpose of you maybe contacting some schools. Maybe there's gonna be something else to help cut the cost.
So do I need to amend my motion? I, I.
I think you're good.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Do we want to add to the motion or not, um, that this is to be funded by the MCC DA board? Um, a special election be funded by them or not?
I think we can throw it on when it goes through the full board.
Any more discussion? There are none. Those for the, uh, or support the motion, say aye.
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 And opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Brenda, I believe you're up next.
Yep. So the Department of Natural Resources sent Joanne a listing there of properties that they want to dispose of. Was on the very last page of that list. They're in the Flat River area.
I don't see any two point one acres though.
One's, one's two acres and another parcel is one.
Oh, gotcha.
Bracy Avenue, also known as River Road. That's a two acre parcel. And then the north forty feet of the east, one hundred feet of the northeast quarter of the southeast quarter, and that's point one. It's a north, north forty feet.
So what did they want, what are, what are they offering it to us for? In case we want to buy it?
Yeah.
What would we do with it?
Had big hopes of anything, developing a park, building a building. It just offered from the state to the counties periodically. They're they're usually, well, you can see the lit, everything prior to that on this list, they're retaining. So anything that's got any value, the DNR is keeping. This is really just a.
Yeah, I can't believe this is really valuable property.
Not less on the outside chance that this touched something else that we had or was adjacent to where we had a big hopes of building a ball field or a EMS post or Doug's maintenance building or.
Build a park there called Filcoon Park.
Well, we gotta buy that.
Point one acres there, for sure. They can just throw that in.
Point one acres, that's the size of this room.
Right.
It's forty feet.
Yeah, I bet you it's not even.
The north forty feet of the east one hundred feet.
Hundred and forty square feet.
So.
So if we're interested in buying those properties before they go out to public auction, we just have to complete the form and send it back with three hundred dollars per parcel, and then they'll tell us how much more we owe. That's how I understood it.
So we don't even know what the cost is.
Yeah, no, we don't know, have any idea.
So it'd be six hundred dollars just to tell them we're interested, and then
Yeah.
they, they set the price on how much it would cost?
Apparently. That's how I interpreted it.
So once you get that cost, if you say no.
They keep your three hundred.
They keep the three hundred. Oh, I gotta start a business like.
Are these adjacent to any of our properties or anywhere close? Do we know?
They're not.
I don't think so.
We don't have any land close to the Flat River Stream Bank Public Water Access.
Well, we have a park, but it's a long ways away.
This is down, uh. This is down off of Fair Plains over by future Commissioner Maher's stomping grounds.
Maybe he'll buy it then, huh?
Yeah. Send in six hundred dollars if you want the chance. I, I guess I don't, I, I'm not all hot and bothered about getting, getting into, I mean, if it was some if it was some really pristine layer, uh, river lot, we could buy it and make it a park or something, but.
Point one acres, make a micro park.
Make a micro park. There you go. World's smallest park.
Yeah.
I didn't think you probably would be interested, but I thought I better run it by you.
Is anybody, anybody else real, real excited about it or what?
Really?
I still like the ring of Filcoon Park.
Yeah, point one acres.
Yeah, point one acre park, Filcoon Park.
Come up for sale, maybe I'll bid on it.
There you go.
So we're moving on?
Yep, I think so.
All right. Next, the building keys. Um, I don't know if all of you are aware or were aware, but the both the Republican Party and the Democratic Party have keys to this building and access the building after hours when no one is here for their meetings. They meet in the conference room across there. Um, Doug and I did a, a building assessment, security assessment with a professional here a couple of weeks ago, and that was one thing that was kind of frowned upon. Um, he thought we need to be keep a, a really good inventory of who has keys, and we need to be collecting and we need to be changing the locks every so many years. Um, and it was a good informative walkthrough, really. I mean, he gave us some good ideas. He gave us some really expensive ideas. He gave us some really expensive ideas. Um, but we'll come back with that later. But right now, I guess what I'm asking to do is collect those keys back from the Republican Party and the Democratic Parties and have them meet somewhere else and not allow anyone in the building after hours that's not an employee. They are scheduled to have meetings here this month, one the fifteenth, one the nineteenth, so I would, I would, if granted, I would like to get that email out tomorrow to them to return those keys and schedule their meeting to be somewhere else this month.
That might be a little bit of dirty cool. I mean,
Yeah, I agree.
next week or two weeks. I mean, we can't say, okay, this is your last meeting. Now you get, you guys gotta figure out somewhere else to meet after this?
After, in January to find a new spot?
Right. I mean, I, I, I don't disagree with this. I I kind of threw a tantrum when they were meeting in here, but I, I don't disagree with this. I, I think there's different security measures we could take to to make it so people could use this building, but I what are they gonna, what are they gonna do now? Where are they gonna go now?
If we have an employee, if we have an employee a part of e- either party.
We don't.
Could we? Could they?
And that's how it started. That's how it started.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, because it could come back, come back to that.
We have some that are on both committees, aren't they?
Pardon?
There, we have some employees that are on both committees, Democrat and Republican, aren't they?
Employees, probably. There isn't an elected officials, but certainly, uh, employees. I don't know who's active in the parties, I guess, but but I don't think of the, I don't think the issue, and Doug or Brenda can correct me, I don't think the issue of that was the the necessarily having somebody here responsible as much as just people in general being in the building after with the doors open and the building being unlocked, isn't it? It wasn't, it wasn't a matter of being able to trust the organization.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it, it, I mean, if we do have employee that has access, that creates another.
This will change that. I mean, I think if we adopt this, that's gonna end, whether you've got a key to the place or not, it's not permissible to use the key to come in and host a a meeting after hours. Is that right?
Well, it's just a non-employee.
Yeah.
We just don't want not, he just suggests a non-employee is not have keys.
But if you're an employee, you could.
An employee wouldn't be allowed to come up here. Say we.
They'd have to have permission for approval to do it.
But they could do it then.
So like my clerks' meetings? Are you saying that I no longer will have my clerks' meetings?
After hours?
Yeah, they're after hours because they work, some of them work full time.
I don't know the answer to that, I guess.
Is there any other, besides the clerks? Well, I guess board of canvassers meets here, but not, is it after hours? No.
No, they're during work.
Who else meets here outside of Republican, Democrat, and clerks? Anybody?
Not after hours. Every other meeting is during hours.
And I don't leave the outside doors open, and once everybody's in, it's not open to the public.
There's always a county employee. You're a county employee, you're an elected official, so you're here. What, what would it cost to go to card swipe? So you know who's opening the door?
I couldn't tell you that, Phil. A lot, I think.
I think we've talked about that here. It can't be.
That was one of his suggestions.
One door couldn't be that bad.
I just mean the outside doors, the, all doors.
We have one card swipe on, on one of the doors.
Well, I think you could lock the front doors and have the side doors as a, as a key card and.
But then every, every person of the Republican Party or the Democratic Party that's coming in that night has a card?
No, no, no.
Just the employees.
The logistics of it kind of suck. Because somebody has to stand by the door and let everybody in. I just, I, I, I'm on both sides of it because I believe this is a publicly owned building and taxpayers are wanting to use it. Who are we to say no? But at the same time, I understand the security risks of it. I understand that somebody could be, you know, hiding in a corner or whatever. I don't know. It, we're going from letting, letting respective, uh, political parties use this place for free to saying, go rent a hall somewhere.
They could use it for free during business hours.
Very true.
Right?
Yep.
So that doesn't bother me that we would close a public building at five o'clock or four o'clock. Because you, you got a group of people come in, somebody puts a stone in the door. You know, the doggone building's open all night. We don't even, it's not even an employee that did it.
Has there been an issue? Is that why this was brought up, or just because we started talking about security?
Just because we started talking about building security.
It's not on the list of best practices. We don't even know how, I bet, can you tell me how long it's been since the locks were taken?
Um, I'm thinking it was around ten years ago.
Okay, and how many people have made copies of the key?
Oh, we're not supposed to make, it says right on that you can't copy.
Oh, yeah, that'll stop everything.
In this proposal, I mean, if you're gonna round up the keys, you're gonna change the locks currently, right? So this isn't just getting the keys back, it's putting them on notice and changing locks and going to a new system where we know how many keys and who has them.
I guess I'd let them use it this month. I'm kind of with you on that, kind of call them up saying, hey, sorry.
Yeah. I, I just think it's, yeah, I mean, we can do it. It's just I think we need to say, this is your last hurrah.
For after hours.
For after hours, and, and I think they need to be made aware that they can do it during hours, but they're gonna come back with a, a song and, a song and dance we hear quite often, as nobody can get here because it's so early and everybody works, which I'm very empathetic to, but I don't know. I don't think there's a cut and dry answer to this question, to be completely honest.
I'm curious how we're gonna view the clerks' meeting compared to the Republicans or the Democrats, I guess.
I think it answers itself. She's an employee. She's gonna have access to the building anyway.
You're, 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 Krista, when you're doing that, it's business, right? Business for the county. All business, yep. I give her a pass. And it's not open to the public. It's only clerks, right, and their deputies, right?
But the doors could be stoned and
It could be.
Somebody could be in and out whenever they want.
I personally go around and make sure the building's secured, one before I leave too.
When you leave, but in between.
In between.
Yeah.
But at least there's an employee that's responsible, so they have something at risk.
It's terrible that we have reached a point in society where we have to worry about stuff like this.
That's the problem.
Yeah, really.
Absolutely.
It is.
And it's really no different than us meeting here at four o'clock after the place is closed. We're up here on the third floor and all the doors are open. Who's, what's to say that somebody doesn't sneak around and hide in the bathroom around the corner? There's nobody making a complete sweep when we lock this place up tonight at six o'clock.
Well, we do have, I mean, we do have a pretty, uh, significant camera presence around here. I mean, that's not gonna stop anybody from getting in, but it, I mean, we'd at least be able to watch them do it. I don't know. I mean, it would.
It would be a reactive thing, though. No one proactive.
But doesn't everybody lock their, doesn't everybody lock their doors? Like every office locks their doors?
Yeah, that doesn't mean somebody couldn't hide in the bathroom and then just start popping people off as they come in.
Holy lord, this is what we got to?
I think it's like breaking windows and stuff.
I'm glad I'm leaving.
The thing, you know, somebody could be in and just kick out a, the glass door going into her office without too much effort. Put a boot against it, and it's wide. It's not like the door coming in from the outside, and then they're inside a clerk treasurer, registered deeds, equalization, controllers, you know, I don't know what kind of.
I want to meet, I want to meet the nerd that wants to break into these offices. What are they gonna do? Like, look at records?
No, you don't. No, you don't.
Oh, look at this deed. Oh, my gosh, unbelievable.
Taking them might not be too bad. Destroying the place might be a little challenging.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
I, I think we probably need to be careful about discussing. We don't want to put a bunch of ideas.
Yeah.
But I think there's a lot of things, I don't know.
No typing.
Well, I think if, if somebody was really motivated to do that, it's gonna happen. I agree, I agree with, with this, but I wish there was a happy medium to it, I guess, is all, is all I can say.
I agree with this, but I think if it doesn't include every scenario, what good have we done?
Right.
If we limit the Democrats and the Republicans, but we still allow the building to be used for the clerks' group and have that same potential of somebody putting a stone in the door, whatever Chris indicated, or we continue to meet here at four o'clock and have the same same thing, what have we, where have we changed it any?
If you limit having clerks' meetings here in the evenings, you're really gonna put a hamper to the election process. I distribute all kinds of materials. I mean, it's a totally different animal to have political parties coming in, in the evening, as opposed to having local city and township clerks trying to do their jobs.
It's the same, your clerk's thing is the same as us being up here. I don't agree that that makes a safe.
Agree that you might not agree.
No, but I mean, do you think that when we're up here at four o'clock after the building?
I think it's dangerous, quite honestly.
Yeah, that's what my point is. I think there should be some kinda consideration for the whole big picture.
But I can have the door locked during a clerk's meeting. You can't during a board meeting. That's a totally, that's different.
That's what my point is. I don't know that we can forget your clerk's thing. I don't know that we can fix this problem. And if we're not fixing this, limiting the Republicans and the Democrats, have we changed anything?
I think we're taking a step in the right direction at least.
I re, I remember when meetings were one o'clock.
Me too.
Yeah, there you are, right up there. I see you. I, I don't have any issue differentiating between the party meetings and clerk meetings. I mean, that's two different things. County employees versus.
I, I'm with you.
I agree.
Non-county employees. But, but security would definitely be better if they had none of them at night. Or else a guard at the door when they have the clerk's meeting. I mean, that, that would solve it. One door, one guard, IDs only, and you know, you could, you could make it happen. Change our meetings to one o'clock?
No, 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 no.
Well, I'm saying that would solve this problem.
Maybe our meetings need to have the handicap accessible door, the only one that's open, and have a presence at that door when we're here then.
Hire, hire somebody to monitor it, yeah. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that would help, that would help your question.
I, I think if we're gonna limit the, the two parties to, to their access to this building, then we need to address what we do on the nights that we meet here at four o'clock as well.
And we need to be consistent.
Yeah.
Which means clerks, commissioners, whatever.
So.
And so maybe along that line, thinking about that, if we're entertaining the idea of a, of a presence at a door location for our meetings and/or the clerk's meeting, do we offer that as an option to those parties if they want to continue to meet here? They have to pay the cost of that.
Sure.
Service.
The other option in the organizational meeting would be to switch the meeting time to middle of the afternoon.
Let's just do it like six AM. I know you've been up for like four hours at that point. I, I don't know what the happy medium is here, but I don't, I don't know the Republican Party's budget, but I doubt they're gonna wanna pull a hundred dollars down every, every meeting to have a uniformed officer here.
They can just go to a restaurant and maybe fifty bucks to use the back room or something.
Yeah, where are you gonna get that body from too? Cause you can't find police officers today.
Have a whole bunch of participation. Well, I didn't want, yeah. Is this something we can discuss with the sheriff about the possibility of having a person here? And make that decision, put, put the parties on notice that we're thinking about making a change. Talk to the sheriff, see what that, uh, having an armed person here would look like. And go from there.
Yeah.
I'd be good with that. Having Brenda notify the parties that we, we discussed this.
Mm-hmm.
We were thinking about just not letting them use it after hours. And we're trying to evaluate alternatives. And tell them what we talk about, just so we don't, I don't wanna surprise them.
Right.
Getting back to what you were saying, you know, just call them up and say, hey, you can't come in next time.
Yeah.
During our meetings or?
Next year is a different, different story.
I, I understand the outside parties using the building and maybe paying for something, for somebody to stand there, for heaven's sakes, I'm not gonna have a job here next year. I might as well do it, right? Do you have a little start?
I wanna see Kevin standing at the door with a shot.
You got a gun? You got a gun?
No, I don't have a gun. But I am a little concerned that we would charge for Kristen to do her job. And where does, now does that come out of her budget? To pay for somebody? Like she's doing her job.
It's our rule, it's our budget. I don't think anybody said we wanna charge the clerk's office, but we certainly.
Charge.
Well, that's the, that goes right back to the fact of we need to make sure there would be participation slash cooperation on the side of the sheriff. If we say, yeah, we can do all this and we'll have a sheriff's deputy here, and then we talk to Mike and he says, tough luck.
Right.
I would think maybe the city of Stanton would be interested in something like that. I don't know. I'm sure, I'm sure our sheriff would have something to say about that as well. But I, I think there's options to explore rather than just cut and dry, we're, we're all done. Cause at the end of the day, this is a publicly funded building. And if people wanna use it, great. We need to, we need to explore all options as far as how to make that a possibility.
In the context of broader security concerns.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think in light of, I think we've, I think the common thing that we've discussed here is no one's prepared to make a quick reaction and, and grant this request tonight. We've let it happen. For whatever reason, the security guy advises against it, but we're prepared to let this go another month or so, right?
That's right. Well, I don't, I don't think, I, I'm not trying, I'm, I'm not advocating to let it go. I'm to explore other options as far as.
So I just, I don't think we're gonna come to this return their keys as soon as possible motion that we've got here. So let's uh.
Table that?
Let's table it or move it to the next agenda with maybe authorizing the controller or Doug to check on a couple of other options and, and come back with something at a future meeting. Are we gonna be here until?
Right.
We need a security officer at the door tonight.
Just to show us to our cars.
Right.
Need a motion to table it, or are we just gonna table it?
You have to have a motion, don't you?
And making more say table this?
Support. So we moved and supported to uh table item eight. Building keys in after hours, building use. Uh, any discussion? Any more discussion? Hearing? Hearing none. Uh, those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Tabled. Reni audit claims. Which I believe is. Not working.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peterson.
I move to approve and allow for signatures warrant number one, two, zero, five, two, zero, two, two. Amount of four hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-nine cents.
Support. Moved and supported to uh allow for signatures warrant number one, two, zero, five, two, zero, two, two, and the amount of four hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carried.
There's a weirdly amount of people.
Uh, ten.
Budget review, H paid.
Yeah.
W.
Your nephew's on there.
Yeah, that's me.
I saw him on there.
So those are your reports for November. It's very early yet still, so it's hard to really make any judgment calls on whether we're doing good or not. Uh, we still have audit, audit um entries to book. So like for instance, most of that general fund revenue under the O, O, O point O category is tax revenue, so that'll get booked back into twenty twenty-two. Um, I did make, you know, my standard notes on the on the expenditure report, I believe I did. I didn't on the revenue one. Other than ARPA. So it's hard to get too excited about anything yet, just because it's so early on. ARPA's always gonna skew everything.
Probably not for much longer.
Well, I think by the, this time next year, I think we'll have pretty much all of that done. If we have a hundred thousand left, um, once everything's paid for, I would be surprised, so. Then your general fund, side by side for twenty-one and twenty-two. It's largely due to ARPA again. Anyone have any questions? I can answer those. No? Next, this month is when we get into our journal entries for audit stuff. So I think Amber actually was amending some today, so next month, uh, I may give you a refresher on the fiscal twenty twenty-two one as well, just to see where, a better picture of where we are, where we ended up there.
Been good though?
Yeah.
I tried to give good news in a township two weeks ago, and they told us to just send that whole surplus back to the taxpayers. Asked them where he wanted his four dollar check sent to.
Seventeen cents, probably. Nice.
You got anything on their updates there, Brenda?
Um, just the bylaws. I just wanted to ask if you guys looked at those bylaws and you see anything else in there that you want to address or talk about that I gave you last time, before the organizational meeting happens? Let me know. Email me. We need to think about committee assignments. I've had one inquiry. Kathy wanted to know when she was at area agency meeting last week, who is gonna be reappointed to that, which we don't know yet, so. I don't know how we wanna, if you guys, if we just wanna hash that out at the organizational meeting, who's gonna do what, or if you just want Pat and I to assign you? I think that's how it used to happen, wasn't it?
No, we've done it both ways and made some educated guesses based on past assignments and had a roster there. We've got to the organizational meeting and had people state their preference, maybe did a little back and forth switch with someone else. So I think it can, can work itself out either way, whatever people prefer.
I'm, I'm willing to give up my seat on Board of Health for anybody that would like to jump in. I noticed nobody's jumping right at the chance.
So if there's any, any offer that anyone feels strongly about being on, let us know and we can pick you there, otherwise we'll probably just.
Develop a slate.
Yeah, develop a slate before then. Did everybody hear the funeral details for Mrs. Johansson?
No, I didn't hear that yet.
Funeral is Saturday at eleven at the Settlement Lutheran Church in Galen. Visitation is Thursday and Friday nights from six to eight at Christiansson's.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's all I have.
Okay. I have a question. I'm, sorry. Brenda, Fund five sixteen, is that the actual amount that's in that?
Which page are you looking at?
Um, page fifty-nine.
Um, five sixteen is the delinquent tax fund.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
This is just uh.
This is just the revenue that was.
Yeah, which column are you looking at?
I was.
Are you looking at what was budgeted or what was?
Available.
So available is, um, care, five sixteen. So that's what she hasn't collected yet.
Okay.
So she's projected two hundred and eighty-three, five. She's only collected thirty-five, four, seventy-eight. Twenty-six, eighty, forty-seven of that was in November, so she has two forty-eight yet to go to meet her projection. That's what that means.
Do we know how much is in the delinquent tax fund?
That's where it was kinda.
I can tell you.
It's not very much, is what I heard earlier.
Well, yeah, it's.
I can tell you as of last audit.
That's fine.
So as of nine thirty of last year, she had eight point four nine million fund balance.
Struggling.
Wouldn't have the funds to pay for this year's.
Well, she uses a lot of that for settlement, when she does settlement, um, in May. So you'd think she would.
In years past, Pat, I thought it was half. She used, liked to use half. Correct?
Hmm, I don't know if half was ever used. She gave us a, I don't know, it seemed like once.
Isn't there a whole thing in like the bylaws or?
Something that she wanted to have in order to pay the locals and be able to do a re, I don't know, I hate to speak for.
No, I understand. I just, it would be nice to have that number.
I think it's, my guess is that, um, if we didn't have this lawsuit looming where there's a potential to pay back some of that, we'd be at the point that we could consider a transfer again. But now with that on the horizon, we probably ought to let the dust clear on that.
Well, no, 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 that's why I'm, I would rather see it come from that fund. From, what I understood earlier was I don't have the funds to pay for it. It's gonna have to come from.
I think it's, I think it needs to come from.
Oh, totally.
Yeah, I, I was trying to drive it that, but.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Right, that's it. Thank you. Anything else? Number twelve, public comments.
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
So sometimes, or I shouldn't say sometime, oh, I'm sorry. We've gone back and forth on how we get sworn in as a group over the years. Got a, a new commissioner, first time commissioner. Sometimes those people have liked to have a formal with all of us and, and the judge doing it. Um, so I was proposing or asking Brenda if she could check with either the judges to see if they'd be available on the date of our next commissioner meeting, when we're all gonna be here anyway, and do that formal thing in case Charlie wants to have his family and whatever present for a photo op or whatever else. I mean, we've gotta take the time to do it at some point before January one anyway, so. If, if there was an opportunity for the judge to do that before our next meeting, would everyone be interested in that? Or do you wanna just go separate and do it when you can do it?
Why isn't, in the past, hasn't, if we're not doing it in front of the judge, doesn't Chris just stand here and sprinkle us with holy water and?
Exactly.
Schedule it too, but.
Right. Charlie's right there. Do you want, do you want a big production on at the courthouse and?
He said he didn't care, whatever we were gonna do.
As long as you don't bring your oldest boy around here, we're doing fine. Who, I mean.
What are we doing right now?
I don't know, cause we got somebody waiting in public.
I mean, tonight, we could do it tonight.
Well, he might want his wife here or something like that.
Whatever, doesn't matter. Nobody wants to have the formal thing, we'll move on. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. It's all yours.
I'm Helen Kennedy. I'm from Mount Cal Township. And I've been sort of a regular attendee at all your meetings for the last couple of years. And I just wanted to say as you end this, uh, sort of this year, that I'm impressed by all of your dedication to the county. I appreciate that. Um, I believe that you all have the good of the county in mind and are paying a diligent attention to the details necessary to run it well. I'm going to miss Mr. Miller. I'm going to miss Mr. Miller, Mr. Beach, my friend Kathy Bresnahan. And, um, and the rest of you will be spread thinner, you know, you'll have new districts and more constituents to, uh, attend to. And I, I hope you remember that half of your constituents are women. You will not have any women on your board. A third of your constituents regularly vote Democrat. You will not have any Democrats on your board. So you need to sort of pay special attention, I think, to some of these, these, uh, things that might be missed by your, by your makeup. But thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments?
I have one. We, I think we need to recognize Brenda for twenty-five years of service to Montcom County. I know I don't, I, I, I believe I can speak for the board when I say thank you for your dedicated service of, what, what did you start out as HR and then accounting and now controller?
I would just say the last couple of years of dealing with you would be enough, but.
I mean. It's not to get rid of most.
So you'll get recognized at the service award this year.
Yep.
Did you go with the clock?
We get the clock, yeah, as a twenty-five year gift and then we get to choose another one.
Whoa.
Yeah, there's like gonna be seven of us, I think, a clock for sure. Chris will be one of them.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I now have a public comment to make. That I didn't have before. Helen? If, since we're gonna be all seven Republican males up here, uh, starting in January, if you notice any blind spots, please let us know, cause everybody has them, right? We all have them. So if you notice any, I'd like to hear what they are. Going forward.
Helen's not afraid to send an email, are you?
But one thing I'll let you know, Helen, it's all women in the controller's office. For the first time, that'll be the first time all men here and all women back there.
Mr. Beach.
We'll adjourn.
Supported to adjourn, uh, those in favor, say aye. And opposed. Stand adjourned.